Good evening and welcome to the April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four City Commission Meeting. Welcome to everybody. I want to turn over the meeting to Sherri Redeman to discuss the ground rules for participation.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and good evening, everyone. To minimize distractions during the meeting, please silence your cell phones. For those attending virtually, please ensure you are muted and your video is off when you are not actively participating in the meeting. The city reserves the right to turn videos off or mute virtual participants. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on the city's YouTube channel and cable channel twenty-five. When the Vice Mayor calls for public comment, please approach the podium to indicate you wish to speak. Those participating virtually should use the raise hand function to indicate they wish to speak. Please leave your virtual hand raised until you are called on. If you have any trouble, you can send a chat, and all chats go directly to the meeting host. Please state your name before speaking, and all comments will be limited to three minutes. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Sherri. All right, so we'll move to item A of the agenda, which is to approve the agenda. The City Commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during the meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as ordered?
Move to approve the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say oppose. Motion passes four-nothing with one person in abstinence, the mayor, Bart Littlejohn. Okay, next item on the agenda is for recognitions and proclamations this evening, and the first proclamation we have is to proclaim the week of April eleventh through the seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, Black Maternal Health Week, and we have Tracy Dotson here from the Douglas County Doulas to receive. Can you please speak ahead of time, please?
Absolutely. Thank you for having me. I'm Tracy Dotson. I'm the program manager for Doulas of Douglas County. We're based here in Lawrence. We're a collective committed to supporting families during one of the most crucial times and transformative times in their lives, the journey of pregnancy, childbirth, and parenting. The health and well-being of mothers are critical to the future prosperity of our city and the nurturing of strong and healthy families. Pregnancy and childbirth should be a dignified, safe, and joyful experience for all. However, complications related to pregnancy, childbirth, and postpartum can lead to devastating health outcomes. This maternal health crisis is particularly devastating for Black women. We're three to four times more likely to die from pregnancy-related complications as white women regardless of their income or education. In Kansas, the mortality related to labor and delivery is significantly higher for Black women, with a hundred and two deaths per one hundred thousand compared to seventeen per one hundred thousand for white women. This disparity has persisted consistently for time. The inequities that Black mothers face are not isolated events, but rather the byproduct of systemic racism in our society. It's festered for far too long. These disparities call for a committed, comprehensive response from healthcare providers, policymakers, and community leaders to ensure that all mothers have access to the care and support that they need. It is on all of us to ensure that no person's race ever determines their health outcomes and that every person preparing to give birth is treated with dignity, safety, and respect in our healthcare system. Throughout the week of April eleventh through seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, local health departments and community-based organizations have come together to celebrate Black Maternal Health Week with community meetings, social media campaigns, all dedicated to raising awareness, fostering education, and advocating for the health and well-being of Black mothers. During Black Maternal Health Week, we also celebrate America's extraordinary maternal healthcare workforce. This often goes unnoticed, our doulas, our midwives, who offer crucial support to our nation's mothers throughout pregnancy, childbirth, and postpartum, and whose work is essential to the health and well-being of all mothers and children. I, Tracy Dotson, proclaim the week of April eleventh through seventeenth as Black Maternal Health Week in Lawrence. Let this proclamation serve as a reminder of our collective responsibility to uplift, protect, and support Black mothers and their families, not just during Black Maternal Health Week, but throughout the year. I challenge local leaders, community partners, to renew our commitment to addressing the crisis of Black maternal mortality and morbidity to affirm that Black maternal health matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. We look forward to helping you uplift your message by reading this proclamation this evening, so thanks for letting me do so. Whereas pregnancy and childbirth should be dignified, safe, and joyful experience for all, however complications related to pregnancy, childbirth, and postpartum can lead to devastating health outcomes. This maternal health crisis is particularly devastating for Black women, who are more than three times as likely to die from pregnancy-related complications as white women regardless of their income or education. And whereas in Kansas, a hundred and two Black women per one thousand, per one hundred thousand die related to labor and delivery compared to seventeen per one hundred thousand per white women, a disparity that has remained consistent over time. And whereas the inequities that Black mothers face are not isolated incidents, but rather the byproduct of systemic racism in our society that has festered for far too long. And whereas it is on all of us to ensure that no person's race ever determines their health outcomes and that every person prepares, or preparing to give birth, is treated with dignity, safety, and respect in our healthcare system. And whereas during Black Maternal Health Week, local health departments and community-based organizations such as Douglas, Doulas of Douglas County work tirelessly to increase awareness and offer resources, information, and support that can positively impact the lives of Lawrence and Douglas County citizens. And whereas we celebrate America's extraordinary maternal healthcare workforce that often goes unnoticed, our doulas and midwives, who offer crucial support, our nation's mothers throughout pregnancy, childbirth, and postpartum, and whose work is essential to the health and well-being of our, all of our mothers and children. Now therefore, now be resolved, the City of Lawrence hereby proclaims April eleventh through seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four as Black Maternal Health Week in Lawrence, and challenge local leaders and community partners to renew our commitment to addressing the crisis of Black maternal mortality and morbidity, and to affirm that Black maternal health matters. Thank you very much. Okay, and next, we are here to proclaim the week of April twenty-second to the twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four as Street USA Week, and proclaim, or end Friday, April twenty-sixth as Arbor Day, and we have Tyler Fike, Parks and Rec Department, to receive the proclamation.
Good evening. I'm actually Levi Parkin. I'm the forestry supervisor, and I'm standing in, in Tyler's absence.
Tyler, I didn't want to come tonight.
He had to go help with the science fair, which I think is a good thing to do.
I appreciate that. I was just given the information and apologized for not knowing you, but it's nice to meet you, Levi.
Very nice to meet you. You know, I just wanted to come up and highlight some of the activities that horticulture and forestry and Parks and Rec staff partook of in the year of two thousand twenty-three with the initiative of keeping a healthy, resilient, and safe urban canopy. So we planted, city staff and city projects planted one thousand three hundred thirty-seven trees. That includes forty-two fruit trees that were planted in city parks and at bus stops in disadvantaged communities. We removed eight hundred ten trees and pruned one thousand seven hundred twenty-three trees, which all exceeds our key performance indicator, UI fourteen. In the coming year, we're planning to implement a new community gravel bed system in hopes of being able to plant more trees for our community to help fight climate change in a dwindling urban canopy, and hopefully to do so in a fiscally responsible manner. So thank you all for your time.
Appreciate you guys, all you do especially, and got those ash bores going. There was a lot of people unhappy, but we're glad to have our canopy safer than it was before. Thank you. All right, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas the year two thousand twenty-four marks the one hundred and fifty-second anniversary of the holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Lawrence, Kansas, has been recognized in its forty-sixth year as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and the Kansas Forest Service, and desires to continue its tree-planting ways. Now therefore, I, Michael Dever, Vice Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of April twenty-second through twenty-six, two thousand and four, Tree City USA Week, and Friday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, as Arbor Day, and urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands, to support our city's community's forestry program, and to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Thank you. And I guess it's fitting, we're going to celebrate Earth Day in the same day, so Kathy Richardson, I haven't spent enough time with you, please come to the podium and provide us insight onto our Earth Day activities.
Yes. Good evening, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Kathy Richardson. I'm the City Sustainability Director, and I'm also the champion of environmental sustainability commitment within our strategic plan. I did invite Will Haynes from the Watkins Museum of History to join me here at the podium. He is leading the coordination of our Lawrence Earth Day Fair coming up, and also Watkins Museum is one of our partners of our unmistakable identity team. So the City of Lawrence is excited to celebrate Earth Day two thousand twenty-four with community-wide events and activities throughout the month of April. These events move the needle of our strategic plan, KPI UI thirteen, which is the number of events that celebrate and enhance area environmental sustainability. This KPI is shared between the unmistakable identity outcome and environmental sustainability commitment. Earthday.org, the global organizer of Earth Day, announced the global theme for Earth Day two thousand twenty-four is Planet Versus Plastics. Planet versus plastics unites students, parents, businesses, governments, churches, individuals, and NGOs in a commitment to call for the end of plastics for the sake of human and planetary health, demanding a sixty percent reduction in the production of plastics by two thousand forty, and an ultimate goal of building a plastic-free future for generations to come. Plastics extend beyond an imminent environmental issue. They present a grave threat to human health as alarming as climate change. As plastics break down into microplastics, they release toxic chemicals into our food and water sources and circulate through the air we breathe. Plastic production has now grown to more than three hundred and eighty million tons per year. More plastics has been produced in the last ten years than in the entire twentieth century, and the industry plans to grow explosively through the indefinite future. In Lawrence, we have taken a step towards reducing single-use plastic bags through the city commission adopted ordinance number nine-nine-nine-six that went into effect March first of two thousand twenty-four this year. And we can all agree, there is more work to be done for a future Lawrence that is plastic-free. The city is joining our community in commemorating Earth Month with educational activities, volunteer events, and more. A couple of events that I do want to highlight tonight and invite you Commissioners, as well as the community, are, both are occurring this Saturday. So the first one is the Tenth Annual Kansas River Cleanup on Saturday, April twentieth, from nine AM to one PM. Please join us at the city parking lot on the southeast corner of North Second and Locust Street. This is a great way to celebrate Earth Month by giving back to the Kansas River. Join Friends of the Call and their partners, the Nature Conservancy, the Mercoop, and the City of Lawrence, to clean up the riverbank below Bowers Oak Dam. And later in the afternoon on Saturday, April twentieth, stop by South Park for the Lawrence Earth Day Fair from one PM to four PM. Co-hosted by Watkins Museum of History and the City of Lawrence, the Earth Day Fair will include a wide range of crafts, activities, and information about our planet's amazing natural resources and how we can protect them. There are over, I heard now, thirty-five organizations participating on Saturday at the Earth Day Fair. There are more activities and events listed on the city's Earth Day page, and we very much appreciate the proclamation for Earth Day.
Thanks, Kathy. We appreciate the plastics update. We understand its negative health effects, and hopefully we can continue to carry out our ban now that the governor has decided to veto the legislator's proposal, so thanks for doing that. I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas the global community continues to face extraordinary challenges such as environmental degradation, extreme weather events, resource shortages, and global health issues. And whereas the first Earth Day occurred fifty-four years ago, when millions of Americans took to the streets, college campuses, and hundreds of cities to protest environmental ignorance and demand a new way forward for our planet. In the years since, the Lawrence government, organizations, businesses, and residents have celebrated and echoed this appreciation and call to action. And whereas this accelerating climate crisis requires action by all communities to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, to protect our planet for future generations, and adapt to climate threats. And whereas the Lawrence Strategic Plan highlights environmental sustainability as a core commitment, meaning that we consider the environment, the environmental consequences of every decision, big and small, knowing that our actions have impacts beyond our boundaries, we protect and restore our ecosystem to make it healthier and more balanced for future generations. And this commitment, along with the other five commitments of the strategic plan, guide all budget and policy decisions. And whereas Earth Day offers people an opportunity to make, to make, renew, and celebrate commitments that will protect quality of life and the earth for generations to come. Now therefore, I, Michael Dever, Vice Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, as Earth Day, and urge residents, businesses, and institutions to celebrate the earth through one's actions and in support of the city's ongoing sustainability initiatives. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is general public comment, and the public is allowed to speak on issues or items that are not scheduled for discussion on the agenda. Comments should be limited to issues and items germane to the business of the governing body. The Commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the Commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Members have, will be limited to three minutes of comments.
My name is Eric Hyde. I feel very grateful to be here today. I feel like we're getting over a lot of our anger, and anyway, Levi left, but I talked to him in two thousand twenty-one, I think, when I was cleaning up Naismith Park, and I'm happy to see him here. And then he's talking about all the trees, and I just had an idea that I think, oh, well, make sure those trees are trimmed so people can walk around them and stuff. And I think we need to increase city staff for that, because it's a really big job. I'm a volunteer, I do that anyway. It's a big job. I did it today even. It's a coincidence, and I got kind of angry when I was doing it, so I accidentally cut myself. Anyway, but I got over that, and, oh, some other things I wanted to talk about, I'm really, I was kind of against the paper bag thing, because plastic bags are really handy, but I like it, so. And also, when I was cleaning up trash around town, there's a lot of paper bags that you can catch around town, and those are hopefully going to go away because of the paper bags, so that's a good thing. Um, let's see here, so I mentioned that, and that, and then I do want to say that in two days, I will be meeting with Bert Nash. I'm not trying to get anybody in trouble. I've already, I'm already over that phase of my life, so now we just need a resolution. And basically, they didn't know what they were doing, and I don't blame them, because most people don't know it anyway, but they were abusing me, and I don't blame them. Everybody else does it to me anyway throughout my life. Maybe I kind of deserve it, I don't know, but we're just going to talk about brain injury rights and stuff like that, and just try to resolve it, and that's more of a conversation for them that I'll leave alone for now. And when I was assaulted with aluminum bat on two thousand, April fourth, two thousand twenty-one, anyway, I went in today for physical therapy at Lawrence Memorial Hospital. And another coincidence, my receptionist lady, her name was Madison, and that means Son of Matthew, which also means, it comes from Son of Matthew, which also means strength or battle. I was kind of battling the homeless, not that I love them, I was just trying to help the homeless, because of stuff I mentioned before, because I only have ten seconds left. But anyway, I just, I'm grateful for you guys, I think you're doing a good job, and just keep up the good work and all that stuff. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Hi, I'm Chris Flowers, and I just have a few things that you, earlier you mentioned planting trees. I liked the idea that was mentioned like the other month about planting hemp. So I mean, if we're planting trees to be environmentally friendly, someone at one of these meetings before said hemp actually is, is better for the air, I guess, than, than a tree. So I just want you to consider that, to maybe the city actually does start planting hemp for environmental reasons. And all, but what I want to get to is, I'm still, I've been thinking about last week, and it just doesn't make sense, well, it does make sense, why, why the Mass Street remodel was put on the consent agenda. I mean, I looked back through, I think there was like three, three meet, public meetings, and I think a couple of open houses. You're spending a hell of a lot of money, and you're redesigning one of the major streets, and then it gets put on consent agenda? And I think the reason is because the city does not want the protected bike lanes, because it's going to cost more money. I mean, why else would that have been stuck on consent agenda? Like, as much time and as major of a change as this is to a major street, you actually think that's something that should have been put on consent? And I want to go even further, as I looked some of the pictures, I went to one of the open houses, and how much diversity was at that meeting? And I just, I mentioned that because I got to thinking, when we did that police review board changes, and we had those meetings, it, the city was intentional about making sure they got a diverse turnout. And it was a diverse turnout, and people I was at the meeting with said, hey, you know, I've never seen this much diversity, basically, at one of the meetings. And the city did a great job at that. So I was just thinking, why is it, why could the city do a good job that time but not later? Like, why can't the city get a diverse turnout? I mean, why is it just old white people at these meetings? I mean, this, the city has proven it's capable of, of doing it. So I think it needs to start being more intentional when we have these public meetings to get public input, that we're actually getting an actual representation of the town and not just one, an overabundance of one demographic. And also, I wanted to wish everyone a safe and fun holiday weekend. It's Bicycle Day Friday, followed by four-twenty on Saturday, and I hope the mayor, I hope you tell people, have a, have a fun and safe holiday weekend when you close this meeting out. Thank you.
That's as high as it goes. The North Lawrence camp is closed. You're welcome, and I mean that when I say you're welcome, not for me. You owe a number of people a thank you. Shelley, Ron, Nancy, Jen, Jared, Josh, Jessica, Kevin, Trina, Kristen, Rachel, there's a number of others. We made that happen for you. You wouldn't have done it without us. How do I know that? I was willing to stand and fight, and some of you got that message indicating that I was planning to do that, because your ordinance gave me the right to. The law gave me the right to, and the Constitution says I wouldn't have lost in the end. I was convinced to do the right thing. I was convinced to do the right thing for the people, because that situation that had been created out there was a problem. The city got involved in something they were ill-equipped for and ill-trained for and did not have the staff to manage it. We have nice, big plans, but no lower implementation ability. It all sounds great, but it never really comes to pass. So now we're at a point where all the problems are behind a fence and a gate that they're trying to trespass people away from, and they got signs out saying you can't loiter on city, open, public property. They got a, no loitering sign 10 feet from a bus stop. How are you gonna enforce that? We're gonna find out. I'm gonna help you with that. There's a consent item tonight for an ordinance. I guess I speak on that now, because it's, I don't have a way of knowing whether it's gonna get pulled. If it does, I guess I get to speak again.
Michael, if it's gonna be on the, I'd be happy to pull it from the agenda if you want to speak to something that's on the consent agenda specifically.
Then if you're gonna pull the ordinance revision, okay.
Thank you.
Last thing I'll say is something I've said a couple weeks ago, and I said the week before, and we're just getting started, Craig. We're just getting started. You guys all know what has happened over the last three to four years in this town. We're just getting started. Chickens are coming home to roost.
Any additional public comment in the room? Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Courtney Shipley. We're all hurdling towards the budget season. I know you all know that, especially at the staff level. There are two things I wanted to bring up. A few of you I've spoken to who make yourselves available. One is, the World Cup is, seems like a foregone conclusion. We will get one team, and it's, it seems that we've put off placemaking for our signs on I-70 and K-10. If you come through from Kansas City, you'll notice how gorgeous Udoni's sign is, and we have nearly nothing. So we need to, I had been speaking to some organizations, including Bonnie at the Chamber, Andrew at Downtown Lawrence, the Restaurant Association, Neighborhood Association, about helping to push forward a budget item that would be placemaking and sign-making. We didn't, I didn't, it didn't seem sensible to put forward a new suggestion on the CIP, but perhaps you could resurrect one that's from 2011, I understand, from staff, at the time of the, the engineering of the South Lawrence Traffic Way or the redo there at 23rd Street. Maybe staff could just reevaluate that, and when they go through the rubric, you know, recall that World Cup is gonna happen to us, and we should get one team at least, possibly two, and that it's very important for people who are coming in on I-70 or K-10 to know who and where we are, for us to be proud of who and where we are. I-70, it seems like it's a little bit of a different question in terms of staff energy, which is they need to talk to KTA and KDOT for sign and placemaking there. There's some incorrect signs there that need to be updated. Explore Lawrence, again, another organization I spoke with, trying to kind of get some energy on this issue. They don't really have the standing to talk to KTA or KDOT, but they have the knowledge of what they need those signs to say, so we don't have to, you know, generate, have a study necessarily. In the last 10 seconds, I also want to mention parking in the new code updating that you're working on. It sounds like changes to parking minimums might be a thing. It'd be great if you all could look at that, and if we all realize that's gonna be a compromise for the community, just let Bradley Harrell know to maybe reprioritize a permit parking program for some of the neighborhoods that are more frequently affected by parking situations like Oriad or East Lawrence or Old West Lawrence. So if, he's not gonna do it on his own, he's, he's got his priority list from years ago, and he's gonna go down that list the way he's supposed to. But if you want, you know, us to be prepared when those changes happen, it would be good to communicate with staff and let them know that that would be a great way to create compromise. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you. Any other comments in the room? Sherri, do we have any online?
We do. Dustin Stumbling Bear.
Hello, I'm Dustin Stumbling Bear. I am here tonight to discuss the upcoming ballot measure to change our form of city government. I am working with Courtney Shipley on a limited series podcast titled Lawrence Asks Why. We are discussing this ballot measure with historians, former commissioners and mayors, longtime community members, and other individuals with professional and technical expertise. We're not asking our listeners to vote one way or another. Our hope is to encourage more community discussion about this important topic that's gonna impact all of us. Currently, we have three episodes available on Audible and iHeartRadio, with future episodes coming every first and the 15th of the month. Go ahead and listen in, get it out with your colleagues, with your friends, your family here in Lawrence, and let's get this conversation going so we can have informed voters in November. I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Dustin.
Stephen Watts.
I'm looking for the video, is it showing?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, excellent. You know, the consent agenda items need to be returned to the public for comment, please. It was wrong to take it away in the first place. The ability of the public to comment on consent agenda items was removed in an effort to silence the public. And this idea of having to come, "Mother, may I," to a commissioner, will you do it, please? And if they don't, they don't. That's, it's wrong. Let's get it back. You know, moving forward to housing, which is something that our community continues to struggle with, and rightfully so. The Town Commission followed the requests of three big-money operations in our town on February 13th, and that's, so be it. But in, in the process in the future, can you please nail down operations for hard numbers? Like Lawrence Memorial Hospital came in and said that, oh, it was great for their staff. Excellent. How many of their staff can pay, are paid $70,000 a year to purchase a $260,000 house? And $70,000 per year to qualify for financing is the bare bones as of December 23 for Lawrence with respect to a $260,000 house. How many people at LMH are paid over $70,000 a year? In order for that to be a viable statistic for them to come and say, "It's great for our employees." Are there that many people at LMH that make over $70,000 a year? And I can ask that same question for Burt Nash, who also came in and said, "This is great for our employees, they need places to live." Yeah, okay, I agree. But how many of them are making over $70,000 a year that can qualify for a loan to purchase one of these houses? And then we have the Chamber of Commerce who came in, and of course, they're in it. You know, everybody who works for the Chamber of Commerce is making over $100,000 a year, and they only play footsies with, you know, the well-heeled. So of course they want big old houses, but in the future, can you please get the hard numbers? And if the numbers are significant, so be it. I'm pretty, I'm pretty suspect. I don't think there are a whole lot of employees at LMH who make over $70,000 a year. I could be wrong. And the same thing is true with Burt Nash. I, I don't think the mental health business is paying a whole lot of people over $70,000 a year. And the Chamber of Commerce, well, that's just the way it is. So can you please get those numbers in the future? Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Chad Basewell.
Good evening, Council, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Yeah, I was thinking about the group pushing hate speech laws, and, you know, if I was part of the group responsible for pornography, usury, communism, the holodomor, the slave trade, hijacking mass media, the open border situation, regime change wars, pushing sexual degeneracy, pushing race mixing, 24/7 anti-white narratives, I'd want hate speech laws too. And so what I'm, I'm requesting that this council consider a resolution to ban so-called hate speech, any laws in regards to that, and ban the DEI initiatives, the diversity, which means fewer white people, inclusion, which means exclusion of white people, equity, which means stealing from white people. I urge this council to forbid, ban any, any of these so-called racist initiatives. And for more information, you can watch a movie called Defiant by Devon Stack, and for more information, you can go to GTVflyers.com. Thank you for your time.
Sherilyn Wells.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, oddly enough, that man speaking about how that stealing from white people, you mean white people have never stolen anything from the minorities? I mean, it's just absurd. I mean, we could, we could go over that, but many treaties with the Native Americans were made and then broken. I mean, his idea that minorities are stealing from the white people, that, that is absurd. I am sure that you-
Yeah, that's cool behavior. So anyway-
Can I speak?
I'm sorry, at this point in time, we're having some audio difficulty, and it's causing everyone to be impacted, and I don't believe-
I was going to say that I feel like there is, I'm sure you've heard about as much about the homeless people as you want to hear.
They can't hear you.
Okay, we need to, seriously, we need-
They can't hear you, you're silenced, you're only talking to the Zoom member.
Okay, please. Gotta get a handle on this AV feed, especially if we're gonna have bad actors. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and, how many other people were in the waiting room, Sherri?
It was just Ms.-
Ms. Wells? Well, I'm gonna go ahead and call her after the meeting to make sure I get her input, and then, yeah, at this, this point in time, I don't know if we can receive any more audio without getting some, you know, with things we don't want to hear at this point in time, or broadcast across the internet.
So, Vice Mayor, we do a five-minute recess. Yeah, I think we need to-
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and gabble in a five-minute recess, is there a motion to do so? Ten-minute recess? Second, all in favor, say aye. Uh, ten-minute recess. Going to go back into session now that we've gotten over some of our technical difficulties. We were in the middle of public comment, um, I'm going to go ahead and end that for tonight because of what happened previously. I'm going to reach out to Ms. Wells, who wasn't able to express her feelings and try to share her thoughts with the commission afterwards in an email. Um, if she wants to reach out to the others, she can do so as well. Apologize for that, um, so we're going to go ahead and move on to the, um, let's put it this way, uh, I'm going to try to go in order here, but, um, if anyone has anything to be polled from the consent agenda, I would ask for it to be, uh, brought up now.
Did you want to pull D5?
Uh, D5 was asked, do we need to pull that tonight or not? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and pull D5 and hopefully we can recover from any negative, uh, comments we get from the internet this morning. Thank you very much, okay, we're going to go ahead and pull D5. Anything else from the consent agenda that needs to be pulled tonight? Okay, seeing none, do I have a, um, a motion to approve the consent agenda with the omission of D5? Oh, sorry, we have two quasi judicial items. Do any commissioners have any ex parte communications to disclose this evening?
The public has to-
Vice Mayor, yeah, we don't need to do that unless they are polled and, uh, by, you just have to see if there's a member of the public that wants to-
Okay, thanks. We're going to go ahead and, so we'll go ahead and poll D7 as well since we're quasi, or no?
No, just ask if anyone in the public would-
Does anyone in the public have any comments on D7, the quasi judicial items?
Do they want to pull it?
They want to pull it.
Pull it.
So I was like, no, I want to.
Okay, go ahead. Anyone online have a motion to pull any items, the quasi judicial items?
No one has indicated they want-
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there a motion to approve?
Move to- Go ahead. Move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of D5A.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, was nay, uh, pass, the motion passes four zero with, uh, mayor in absentia. Okay, D5 items, any public comment on D5?
As we've had problems in the past with the police department and city attorneys stretching the laws, I want to clarify one thing about this change. I don't have a problem with changing to the fighting words doctrine, but we need to understand the fighting words doctrine a little better before we run with that. In the last 82 years, not a single Supreme Court case has withstood a challenge based on the fighting words doctrine alone. You will need more than just words. Our words in here are protected, just be aware of that, that in 82 years, not a single case has sustained Supreme Court challenge. Have a good day.
All right, thanks. Any other public comment on this issue, on item D5? How about on the other day?
No.
All right, great. Um, is there a motion or any comment from the commissioners on item D5?
Bye. I move to adopt on first reading, ordinance number 10045, amended city code section 14-409 on disorderly conduct.
Second.
A motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. Uh, motion passes four zero with the mayor in absentia. Okay, next item. Any commission items? Anybody have anything?
Love it. Um, I was just going to note, we had a conversation a couple meetings ago about the property tax rebate. And I assume you saw that the county is looking at a property tax rebate, um, process. And so, um, I think they're having that discussion tomorrow night at their meeting. Obviously that only affect the county taxes, but might be something to look at because if we're going to do something like that, I assume we'd want to make it easy on everyone to have a similar process. I think they're basing off the Johnson County one. It might be with staff looking at and giving us their thoughts on it.
Does anybody remember, it's not the silver tax? What was the one that was just passed before they adjourned?
Yeah.
Because it wasn't, and I spoke with Senator Francisco on it, um,
About like February or something like that?
No, it's one of the ones, it's, I don't want to spend too much time, just on where it increases the, the threshold, but my, it's, it's, it passed. However, in having conversations with her, I recognize that there is a huge information gap. And so, that might be something, as the county and the city and we're talking about rebates and support, that we need to kind of jump on and be as an educational piece. Cause I know I helped, I was able to help my mom with it, as it relates to property tax and seniors. But a lot of folks don't know about it and they're not going to be able to take advantage of it at this year. Now, I heard it's supposed to be retroactive and I was speaking in context of something that I don't have the name of and I promise, I apologize for that. But I, it just, it, that, it was just something I just wanted to bring up with that, that I shared with Senator Francisco because I said, you know, how does, how are, how are individuals being made aware of it? And the comment was reading emails and like, oh, not everybody reads emails. So we got to be better about disseminating information like that when it comes to housing and housing affordability that helps our community, so. Something for us to keep an eye on.
So community engagement type situation?
Yeah. It's actually a little bit more than communication, almost, it'll be like a VITA as well. Cause there's going to be folks that are going to need assistance on how to, how to file for it, so.
Yeah, I don't know why that, because it's-
But we start with engagement. I don't think it's complicated, it's just a lot of folks are not going to realize they apply, that they qualify for it. And there's steps to, you have to get the approval to qualify and that was passed a week and a half ago and today, yes, well, yesterday, let's say. I got my taxes done, I won't tell everybody else. But, you know, it's a, it's a missed opportunity this year for several, for a lot of folks who would have qualified for it if they're, if they own their homes.
Okay. Got it. Anything else? All right, city managers report, please, uh, give us your update.
Um, I think Casey will start off with an introduction.
Sure. You want to come up?
Commissioners, I'm really pleased tonight to introduce you all to our new finance director. So, um, this is Rochelle Matthews and she is coming to us from the city of Topeka where she was serving as their acting chief financial officer. She is a certified management accountant and she serves on the Kansas Government Finance Officer Association State Board and is an active member of women in public finance. As you know, um, the finance director plays a very important role on our executive leadership team overseeing the city's finance department and also serving as our champion of sound fiscal stewardship, uh, under our strategic plan. So we're really excited to have her and her expertise here and she's hitting the ground running. She told me on her second day, she's already gotten some stuff done, so way to go.
Welcome. Nice to meet you.
Thank you, I'm very excited, I'm very excited to be here and look forward to working with you all.
We are.
Happy to have you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Sorry for a, you know, inconvenience that occurred while it's your first city commission. Welcome to Lawrence.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, the only other items we have on there is a follow-up on the city's campsite reporting webpage. We just a memo update because there were some questions about that, uh, last time and then the future agenda items. Happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions on the, his report items?
I did have, I-
Yes, please.
I was looking at the numbers where we confirmed that there were 57 campsites through that reporting process that were verified or confirmed. Did we, um, were those campsites allowed to continue or were the folks asked to, you know, help find a different situation?
I, I don't, I don't know specifically about each of them, but I, we typically would try and always, um, provide, um, support services, uh, offer recommendations for, um, different supports that they might need. So in some cases, I'm sure that they were continuing to camp. But in other cases, we, they may have been asked to move or in, in all cases, they would have been offered services to find somebody else.
Right, thanks.
There's some areas where obviously we don't expect any camping and we would let somebody know about it right away. There's other areas that have had long histories of camping and we're gradually working to address those systematically.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, um, any items on the commission calendar? This is, oh, sorry, this is-
So it's a, this, this is open for public comment, this is one of the items that open, is open for public comment.
All right, I forgot. Wasn't named and sitting here, so I had milk, I forgot there was the internet. Any public comment on?
There's none on soon.
Okay. Moving on, thank you for the reminder. Um, any commission calendar items? Okay, looks good.
All right.
Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Move to adjourn.
As a mo, second?
Second.
Uh, first and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes four zero.
Have a good night, everyone.
Two.